... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do the roll call, please?
Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
I am here.
Chris Bowe.
Rebecca Reber.
Here.
Ryan Wopat.
Here.
Emily Zach.
Here.
And Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum. Approval of the agenda, I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris, is there a second?
Second.
Jennifer, motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We will begin this evening with a visit with Representative Steve Doyle. As is part of our practice, we have invited elected officials to come and present for a few minutes, update us on what's going on in Madison with some of the legislation related to education, and then offer some opportunity for the board members to ask questions if they have any. So Representative Doyle.
Thank you for the invitation. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And the timing is kind of perfect, because we just finished our session for the two-year biennium that we operate under. About a week and a half, we finished up. There is another two-day period coming up in about a month where the legislature has a chance to override governors' vetoes if they are brought up at that point. But that would be the only business on the calendar for those particular days. So what I wanted to do today was to kind of give you, it's gonna sound like a grocery list, 'cause I'm gonna go down the list of the bills, tell you what they are, and then what happened with them, where they stand at this point. And then I can answer any questions regarding them that you may have. But because this is the end of the session, I can pretty much tell you what passed, what didn't pass, what may happen to some of the bills that have made it to the governor's desk, and will they be signed or not signed. So let me just run through these fairly quickly. There's Assembly Bill 59. This was a bill that expands eligibility for voucher schools. The governor has already vetoed that one. Assembly Bill 82 passed both houses on a voice vote, and this bill creates a requirement that the Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association develop information on sudden cardiac arrest. Not a controversial bill. AB 122, this passed both houses on a voice vote and is likely to be vetoed by the governor sitting on his desk at this point. This bill creates a program that's roughly a hybrid between a charter school and homeschooling. What it does is it allows pods of families to homeschool their children together. So like I said, it's kind of a hybrid between those two concepts. Again, the governor's kind of indicated that he intends to veto that. Assembly Bill 196 was a bill that passed the Assembly and was not taken up by the Senate. There's a small opportunity that it could be brought up later, not likely that it would be. This bill would have prohibited trans girls from participating in girls' athletic events at public or voucher schools. Don't expect that to go any further. Small chance that it could be. Assembly Bill 405, this was passed in both houses, likely, highly likely to be signed into law. It adds September 11th to the list of special observance days that apply to general school operations. Assembly Bill 411 is one of the critical race theory bills that would not allow the teaching of subjects in, certain subjects in schools that fall basically under that category. The governor has vetoed that bill. Assembly Bill 488 was a bill that was vetoed by the governor, and this bill would have required every school district to post full curriculum on their websites. Assembly Bill 560, this has been enacted into law, in other words, passed legislature and signed by the governor. This bill adds information about the safe haven law to required curriculum for schools to teach a human growth and development program. For those of you who don't know, the safe haven law is a law in Wisconsin and most other states in the country right now. It basically says if you have a, usually an infant, that you don't feel you can take care of, if you take that child and drop the child off at a hospital, a fire station, police station, places like that, you would not be charged with a crime. And so the idea to present that information at the, basically the high school level, again, is with the intent to hopefully save lives, so that people understand, usually young moms, but people understand that there is another avenue. Obviously, adoption's always an avenue, but some people just don't feel they can go through that process. And there've been dozens of lives saved since that law went into effect, probably, I think it started in the 1990s and kind of went across the country fairly quickly. So again, it was a very non-controversial bill. Assembly Bill 893 also passed both houses, likely the governor will be signing this one. This eliminates the sunset date on the dual enrollment credential grant program administered by the Higher Educational AIDS Board. The next bill is the, what was referred to as the parental bill of rights bill, AB 963, and that, as I said, passed both houses. The governor has indicated he plans to veto that one. Assembly Bill 970 passed both houses, likely gonna be vetoed by the governor. This eliminates income limits for participating in the statewide school voucher program. Basically limits the caps, or takes off the caps in that regard. And then the final one I wanted to mention, Assembly Bill 995, this passed both houses. Governor has also indicated he's gonna be vetoing it. This bill allows parents to opt their children out of face covering policies enforced by school districts. So in a nutshell, we have a lot of education bills that went through the process, some all the way through the process. Quite a number of them went most of the way through the process and are sitting on the governor's desk. And a few, and then a lot of them that I didn't even mention here, as you can see, I've got about four or five pages worth of bills. Bills that related to education in one form or another that either didn't make it out of committee or didn't make it out of one or the other, or both houses. I would say in my, I was elected in 2011, and in my time during being in the state legislature, this is the most education bills that I have seen come through the legislature. So obviously, it's a hot topic, very strong opinions on both sides for education, which in some sense is good. I mean, we want people to pay attention to what's going on in our public schools. Unfortunately, it's also been fairly divisive. And, you know, we're gonna see that with the governor vetoing a number of these bills. And I guess I'm not gonna say good, bad, or in-between on any of the particular bills, just that, and I sound like a broken record on this, 'cause I say it all the time, we don't know how to work together in Madison. We have, the Republicans won't talk to the Democrats, the Democrats won't talk to the Republicans, and so this is what happens. We have a lot of bills that make it through part of the process, and then they die because somebody or the other, one side or the other, isn't even willing to sit down and talk to try to work out our differences. So that's the sad part of being in the legislature. I wanna give you an example of one of the fun parts of being in the legislature, and you've heard me talk about this one before. And I know that you have a committee talking about whether public officials, Cheryl knows what I'm talking about, some of you other ones knows what I'm talking about, to allow public officials to get lists of honor roll students. And the Holman School District right now is the only school district in La Crosse County where I cannot get the list of honor roll students. And I know you have a committee looking at that, and I appreciate that. But I wanna tell you a story about a particular student who got one of those letters from me. And his name is Nolan. And Nolan is, I believe, autistic. And the only reason that I know in particular about Nolan is that his dad posted a picture of my honor roll letter on his Facebook page. And here is what, above that picture, here's what dad wrote. And again, Nolan is, I believe, autistic. "Nolan's day on Monday was about as bad as it could get. It was nice to get this in the mail today. Sure, he has some really lousy days, but this shows he's working hard at school, and he's had plenty of good days too. Way to go, buddy." I mean, when I saw that, it's like, this is what it's like to do good things in the legislature. We don't pass a lot of bills these days, because the legislature at all levels of government unfortunately is so polarized. But sometimes we can do stuff good that people say, "Yeah," you know, "that's a nice thing to do." So again, my lobbying, "Please, change your policy to conform with state law so that I can get those honor roll letters out." People tell me all the time, they're on their refrigerators, they're in their kids', you know, hope chests and so forth. And that and the fourth graders coming to visit in the Capitol are my two favorite parts of this job. I just love those kind of things. And I admire you folks for what you do, and I admire all you folks out there for what you do, because the kids are our future, and if we screw things up, we've really screwed up our country. So thank you for all you do. And I have one last thing I wanna mention. The last couple of sessions in the legislature, we have started this process, or we call it the first responder of the year. And I thought that was such a great idea. And this year, the first responder of the year, I had two people that I recognized, one police officer and one EMT. And I thought, "This is a really neat idea." So this last month, I, in fact, I have the names running on the radio right now, I recognized three people as healthcare provider of the year. And I went to Gunderson, and they had this really neat award ceremony, and a bunch of people showed up, and it just made me feel good, made them feel good. Next up, teacher of the year. If you have a particular teacher in the Holman School District that you think deserves some special recognition, send that name to me. Go to my website, www.misterbipartisan.com, easy to remember, and tell me who that great teacher is and why they should get recognized. And who knows, next month, they might be on the radio. So thanks for the invitation. Be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Well, I'll just start. Any of those bills, do you see the governor calling legislature back, or the leadership in the legislature coming back to override any of those bills that he has vetoed? Or what is your guess on that?
So, we don't know. There is that opportunity in April, it's literally called the veto override session, where we could be brought in to try to override those vetoes. I don't think it will happen, because I don't think the votes are there to override the vetoes, quite honestly. And so, you know, the Republicans did what they needed to do to bring forth that issue. The governor did what he needed to do to say, "I don't agree with that issue." So they've marked their territories and so forth. And I don't know that there would be any purpose to be served by bringing up a veto override that's not gonna be successful. Now, if the Republicans show up, and Democrats stay home because we have something else to do, and the Republicans have more people there than the Democrats, and the vote comes up, yeah, then it could be overridden. But it has to happen in both houses. So I don't expect it to happen. So I feel pretty comfortable that the bills that I have said either have already passed and signed into law, or that the governor has indicated he will sign. I think that's pretty close to the end of the story.
Okay. Other questions from anybody? Well, Steve?
You're making it easy on me this time. Thank you for, that's what happens when I get here at the end of the session, 'cause you don't have any more questions for me for things that aren't gonna happen. So.
Thank you very much.
I always enjoy coming to talk with you, and obviously, you know where to find me. So thank you very much.
And I'm leading that committee, and I believe it will be on the next agenda. So we are continuing to work on.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then moving on to public participation, we don't have anyone requesting to speak on any of the action items or debatable actionable items at this time. So we will move on to reports and discussion, and start with Julie Holman to talk to us about debt defecence. Are we needing to push that back?
Yes, can we, so we can move to Dan Garrett?
Sure, absolutely. So Dan, if you wanna come up and talk about school bus bids, we have a presenter who is also presenting at another school board meeting remotely in the back here. So we will try to get him out here as soon as we can. Thank you, Julie.
So I'm joining Dan Garrett here this evening, just so that I can introduce him. So Dan is our new director of transportation. He took Beth Hobbs' job when she retired at the end of December, and very happy to have him. But I think it's the first time that you've all been introduced to Dan in this role. So we just wanted to introduce him and welcome in his director role. And he's gonna be presenting on bus bid specifications.
And please be comfortable, we don't bite, we promise. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, Dan.
Well, mine should be pretty short. We're just talking about new bus bids for the 22-23 school year. We're gonna open them up here shortly. And we're looking at getting the same thing we did last year, two 77 passenger propane buses. We are looking at approximately $224,000 for the two of them combined. 160 of that's gonna be coming from the referendum that was passed. That is a steep jump in what we did last year. We're looking at, it's a 10% increase that we're looking at spending. So we're trying to add that into the budget. I guess that's pretty much it.
So typically, Beth would come to you in the past and let you know that we're going out for bid for buses. So that's what, that's what Dan is doing here, so that he can go out for bid, and then these would be purchased in the next fiscal year or budget cycle after July 1.
And so, and for the board, the buses are on a cycle, so we're worried about maintenance costs and those sorts of things. So the older buses then come off of the inventory, and then these new buses will replace them.
Yeah, this'll bring us closer to above a 10-year mark. So our school buses will be less than 10 years old on the average.
Awesome.
That'll be pretty.
So it looks like April is when we would have it on the agenda for consent.
April 25?
Yeah. Any questions?
And then, how many propane are we up to then?
When we get these two, it'll be a total of 17, oh, sorry, it'll be a total of 19. So almost half of our fleet will be propane buses.
Okay.
Gary? The big rise in gas prices, has propane remained pretty stable, or is it taking a spike as well?
Propane has gone up just as much as diesel, maybe been a little bit more.
Really?
Yes. They're still, it's still cheaper to operate the propane buses right now, and we're still looking at that as far as maintenance costs and everything like that. But right now, propane still looks the way to go.
Any others? All right. Thank you so very much. We'll see you back in April.
Thank you. I'll be back.
So Cheryl, Eric is here now.
Okay. Eric, if you wanna come over to the table and join Julie, debt defecence is on our agenda for report only.
Good evening. Eric Cass. I'm the Director of Public Finance for PMA. I think I may have met some of you virtually this last fall, when I kind of jumped in and helped support the initial conversation as it relates to what we're showing you this evening. So this circling back and starting from the beginning relates to some property tax levy management strategies that we worked with a lot of school districts at PMA, and that I think Julie brought to you last November for approval. So what you're looking at here on the left side of the screen is an initial debt profile from April of 2019, originally 23.5 million. And what is being recommended on the far right of the screen, you'll notice that the lowest green box, which is an amortization for $2,890 in 2030, actually reduces to $1,480 in 2030. Because what defecence is doing is it's allowing you the flexibility to prepay debt prior to a call date. So you can see that in lower left, the call date is April 1st, 2027, for those three maturities in green. But you're able to set aside these funds and do an escrow and pay that off, where the escrow will pay the interest and the principal on April 1st of 2027. So with the structure in mind, there's a lot of numbers up here, I understand. But the two most important ones are gonna be the savings that the defecence creates, as well as a unique piece for Holman, which is the return you'll receive from the state of Wisconsin in additional funding next year to offset property taxes. Unfortunately, that is not new funding to spend in the classroom, it is simply a property tax reduction. So what you see there is currently 229,203 is the interest saved by putting aside the 1.5 million of additional levy into this defecence. And that is accumulation on the far right of the screen of all of those interest payments of $42,300 that will be paid by the escrow, as well as some interest wrapped into that 2030 as well. And then on the bottom right, as I alluded to, you receive positive aid on the tertiary level. And what that means is when you spend more, the state gives you more back in return. So we would project, using last year's amount of 32.33%, we'd get an increase in state funding next year, just short of half a million dollars, which would be another strategy to offset property taxes for next school year. And then you can see the calculation there, takes into account and breaks down to what we would expect if this were to move forward and be approved later this month. It would be just short of 1.5 million would need to be deposited in order to create this transaction.
So are there questions? I think, Julie, one of the things that this also does is allows us some room that if we would identify some needs, possibly a referendum or something like that, that we could still, the consistency, I think, is something that we look for, is to not have ups and downs in our mill rate and that sort of thing. And this would allow for that consistency to stay there.
Right. So when we presented on this last October before we certified, before you certified the levy, that was the intention, because the mill rate was going to drop more than we were hoping for, to remain more consistent. It still did drop by quite a bit, but by doing this over levy in debt 39, and then the transaction for defecence, then we were able to allow it to not drop as much. So historically correct. Cheryl, we have worked to try to keep that more level within the debt fund. And one thing I was just gonna piggyback on what Eric said, this is a projection. You're all aware of the current environment, and investment is changing. And so this is a projection of savings. And then also, the cost of the defecence is estimated about 13,000, 13,500, but the net savings is estimated at almost $230,000. And so obviously, there's more savings than there is cost to this transaction. So this actually shortens our maturity on the debt that you're looking at, is the high school addition and remodel debt. And it shortens the maturity, it shortens about half of the last year of the payment in 2030 by doing this transaction. So there's a lot of benefit from doing this. So.
And the purpose of that is if we have needs, and we allow the mill rate to go down, and then we have needs, then it can sometimes be a surprise to folks when we have that increase. So if we can keep it consistent, that's a better, I think, better for our taxpayers in the district. It's more predictable that way. So, okay. And that's the purpose behind what we're doing.
Right. So there isn't a request for any action tonight, but the resolution for this to occur would come in two weeks. And then the settlement date is, our closing date for this transaction would be April 11.
So could you address for the board, and maybe, I don't know if you can tonight, but you had mentioned the changing times and the economy and the impact that that could have. Could you share with us a little bit about what that negative impact could be?
Actually, at this point, it's kind of a positive impact. So what's happening in the world is a lot of uncertainty, and markets are all over the place. But what, the only volatility in this analysis is really when you put money into that escrow, it sits there until the call date. So it sits there for roughly five years. And it earns interest along the way. And so what's actually benefiting this today versus when this was done, ran originally in February, is that interest rates on those allowable investments, which are safe, either treasuries or what are called slugs, they're all government-backed, 100% guaranteed securities, has actually increased. So there will be a little more interest-earning kickoff in the escrow.
Okay.
Which will help create a little bit more savings and potentially pay off a little bit more of that maturity.
Well, I'd like to hear that.
It's not gonna be large-dollar amounts. I don't wanna mislead you. You know, we're talking 1,000 or two, but.
Yeah, it's not going the other way though.
Right, correct.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And then, speaking of needs, we have reports tonight on, from our building administrators of building deferred maintenance need from the comprehensive facility assessment study that's been done.
I'm going to kick this off, and then invite some of our fellow administrators up here. So.
Could you pull the mic in front of you? I fear it's not picking up.
There we go. There we go. All right, can you hear us now? Yes. Excellent. I wanna make sure it's clear. Okay, so this presentation is on, I just wanna take us through a timeline here, is back, last April in the spring through August, we, as a district, engaged in a comprehensive facility assessment to help develop a long-range facility master plan. So from April through August, a team of experts in educational facilities, made up of engineers in specialized fields, did some walkthroughs of our buildings. Others engaged in conversations with our building and grounds department and our leadership team. And then our staff were surveyed in that, over that time. And then, as we have in past years, in November, we presented to the board a list of our un and underfunded needs presentation. But also, in conjunction during that time in November, something that we don't bring to the board, but that happens, is the Buildings and Grounds Department prioritizes their capital maintenance projects. Starts to do that for the upcoming year also. So when that happened in November, at that time, we didn't have the final district comprehensive facility assessment report. The benefit of this facility assessment is that we have a very thorough and detailed list of needs in our district. And it'll allow us to plan not only for upcoming years, but years to come with a solid fiscal plan. So over years and years down the road. So from there is work to do with prioritization and engaging stakeholders directly involved along the way. As you can see from the timeline, the goal is eventually to bring initial recommendation to the board in May. And currently, right now, we've been working in our Buildings and Grounds Committee, starting to dig into our deferred maintenance and start to prioritize. And so tonight, we're gonna start with sharing some of those needs out. There were many, actually, many of the needs you hear about tonight were on the un and underfunded needs, but there's also some new ones. So we just wanna make sure that you have a picture of what those are. But before we start, I want to first also acknowledge our custodial and maintenance staff. As you hear about this tonight, the way that they work so hard, and how they keep the building so clean, and like they are new, we can't thank them enough, 'cause it's not an easy task to do, especially with the amount of traffic that we have within those buildings. And they look much newer than they really are. What I don't think you may realize is Evergreen was built in 1978, Viking was built in 1972, and the middle school was initially built in 1955. So some of what you are gonna hear is just natural progression of aging that just occurs in buildings and that. But they have done a great job of keeping good functionality and keeping the teaching and learning happening and that. So with that, so each of our buildings, we're gonna start with our high school principal here, Mr. Sackett, just to share a little bit about the high school.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Wayne Sackett, principal of the high school. While there are some needs in our building still, we have a few high priority needs that need to be addressed. We do have a few others that we can address through deferred maintenance and working with our Buildings and Grounds Team and Chad Brando. I would like to ground us a little bit. You know, we had a great referendum and a whole bunch of community support, I think, in one of our largest supported referendums ever. And thank you to the community for that. And I just wanted to re-ground us a little bit. While a lot of attention comes to like our fitness center and our PE and athletic areas, CT area, our fine arts center, one of our core needs years ago was to address our core areas in our building, and that's the commons in our kitchen, and the hallways, and the lighting, and our chiller. And so all of those, those needs were a high, high priority. And if you've been in our building, our staff and students are able to experience lunch and those common areas quite safely. And I just wanna just point that back out, as you look at some of the pictures of our commons area and our kitchen, a lot, a lot of our highest priority needs were met through this referendum. And just wanna thank everybody for that. So with that said, I think I'll yield the rest of my time to my colleagues, unless there are any big questions.
Any questions for Wayne?
So we're very thankful the high school's in pretty good shape. All right. Now you're ready. Our next building is our middle school. And we have Mr. Vogler with us, principal tonight.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking time for us to present tonight. First of all, I just want to start out, Dr. Mueller mentioned this before, but just by stating that what I'm going to be talking about tonight and what others are going to be talking about, by no means is, is due to a lack of hard work from our building and grounds. Our building and grounds work very hard to keep our buildings clean. But some of the projects and issues that I'm going to be talking tonight are beyond a fix, and, and also, when we talk to them, are too large of a project for just a fix. I'd also just like to say that we know that there are many issues in, in some of our buildings, and so all of us will be talking about those, and, and we know that those are all needs. So we're all just presenting on that so that you have an idea of what's happening in each of our buildings. When, when you look at the, the middle school, one of the first high priority areas is the interior finishing. When you look at ceilings, walls, floors, they're our first high priority area. As you look at this, you will find flooring throughout the building that is chipping or is, is coming off. You will also find in, in many areas in our building, in our hallways and classrooms, stained ceiling tiles. They do replace these, but oftentimes, due to leaking in the building, these become stained again. And sometimes, we don't know why the leak is occurring. It can be due to melting, it can be due to a rainstorm, but at other times, it can just happen. And, and that's just due to a larger issue with, within that, those leaks. You'll also find many of our floors and our locker rooms are very chipped, are outdated, and, and our shower rooms are, are very close to being non-functional and, and very difficult to use as you're looking at those types of things. Then, as you look at our next high priority area, when we look at doors, casework, being ADA compliant, cubbies in our classroom and basketball hoops in, in both of our gyms. Throughout HMS, we have many interior doors that are difficult to close, they have gaps, they need to be pulled very hard to shut or pushed very hard to open. Many of them are not the same doors, the same locks. Therefore, when you're looking at things like Alice, where we're trying to create building-wide protocols, it's difficult to do that when so many doors and so many areas are different. Our bathrooms, many of them have been designed in a way that it is very difficult to do any type of renovation to make them ADA compliant. And our classrooms, much of our casework is very outdated, and you will see parts of the molding or things that is peeling off of them and, and is not meeting our staff needs. Finally, then, when you look at our basketball hoops, especially in gym B, they're very old, they cannot be moved, and it makes it difficult to utilize the gym for other activities. For one example, being volleyball, it can be difficult to utilize that because those hoops stay there and, and are in that area. When we look at nutrition services, this is, this is one area that we look at that, and one of the major areas to look at is, is just when we look at some of the equipment that we have and, and talking about creating better opportunities for that equipment to allow our staff to serve nine hundred students and over a hundred staff that may come through those lines. And also, looking at the area in that kitchen, as well as the area in our, in our serving area, much like was addressed at the high school. When you look at the site and civil, we're also talking about repairs that need to happen on our roof, as I talked about before. These are constant, and, and it is bigger than, than just a, a job to come in and fix. I think it is something that needs to be looked at to be completely redone. Every rainstorm, we have to worry, we have staff that will actually look at the weather forecast, and they will move their furniture in order to make sure that furniture, if it does leak, doesn't get stained or it doesn't, doesn't get their computer wet. The problem is much deeper than repair. As you look at the outside of the building, the stucco in many of our, of our building is starting to come off or is, is stained, as well as mold on the outside of our buildings. Exterior doors can have gaps to them, and they also are just old. For example, right now, we have one door that we're working on fixing, but we can't use a key in that door because your key might not go in, but then if you get it in, it might not come out. And so we're asking people to use other doors. And so it's just things like that, that, that is continual wear on a building that need replacement. And then, as we look at other doors, they're just beyond repair, and so wanting to, to make sure we have that for safety and security. Finally, when we look at things like electrical, we are the only building that, I don't know what the technical term for this is, but that cannot pinpoint where the fire is exactly in, in the building if we would have that. We know the general area, but other buildings have the system where they can say it is right in this exact location. Ours does not. When we look at multiple remodels, when you need to repair, it's much more extensive due to eight additions from fifty-five to, to oh-five. We would like to, one of the recommendations is an emergency generator. We would like to replace this and put it in, but it would not be possible without major remodeling due to electrical repair that would need to get done first. Many of our classrooms, we cannot use all of the plugins, because if they do, they will blow fuses. The same thing is in our gyms. When we have large events in our gym, we runs extension cords to other outlets in order to make sure that we can power all of those things. Our public address system needs to be addressed, it breaks out when you're talking into it. Again, not for a lack of trying to fix it, they've spent a great deal of time on this, but it's just a system that is old and outdated. And then finally, just looking at our lighting in our building, our lighting needs to be updated for our staff and our students. The final thing that I've talked about is the temperature on a building. Building temperature is variable. Some rooms can be extremely hot, some rooms can be extremely cold, and you can dress for that the next day, and the temperature is switched, and now it's the opposite. Many of our gym temperatures, they can be very cold in the winter time and extremely hot and humid in the summertime. And in our classrooms, you will see many of our teachers that set up their classrooms due to the way air blows in their rooms, because the air is extremely hot coming out or very cold coming out. They'll set it up so that students, students know need to sit right in front of that. So that's a review of some of the needs that we have at the middle school. Any questions?
So, and those needs are included in the item that you have projected, correct? The...
Yes, those are, those are the items that are, I reviewed the items that are in green on that, most of the items that are in green on that sheet.
So priorities are eighteen million. Am I reading that right?
Oh, oops, sorry, 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 sorry. Not, not, not...
I believe white.
Like, everything on that list adds up to eighteen million. You'll notice there's some highlights in yellow, and Mr. Brando, who are director of buildings and grounds, has looked through those to say, what can I put within my maintenance budget and work through? Because there's some items that definitely can fit within his budget over time. So he's identifying those with our building leaders also, because we want to look at all funding sources available to make sure that we're doing that. And then also, you'll notice not everything's highlighted in green on the list, because some of those maybe aren't as high priority in that. So just getting an overall feel for what some of the needs are within the middle school.
But if we were going to do it all?
If we did it all?
Like that?
Yep.
It would be eighteen million.
Eighteen million, yep, you are correct, sorry.
And any idea of what the cost of a new middle school would be?
Um, the cost of a new middle school, so we have with us...
I know, I saw him talking.
Ryan and them. So you're more than welcome to come, join us and tell us about...
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five million for a new middle school? Okay.
So sixty-five million?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question.
Thank you.
And then we do have some pictures for your viewing in that. Okay. Now on to Viking. So with us, we have Bonnie Striegel and Sue Eitland, who are leaders of that building, so...
You can put the pictures or however you want to do them.
You can.
Yep. I got it. Good evening. First, I'd like to give a little background of Viking. Viking currently serves four hundred and three students in grades K through five and houses about two hundred students in our school district's early childhood and 4K programs. The building that is home to Viking was originally built in nineteen seventy-two. As you know, it was home in middle school at the time until extensive renovations were completed, and it became Viking Elementary during the nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five school year. A new gym was added in nineteen ninety-nine, and additional remodeling took place from two thousand five to two thousand eight in our K-one wing. In two hun, two thousand twenty, a two-stage entry, flexible learning space, and new administrative offices were added. It's important to remember that Viking used to be an open-concept building. When it was renovated, the walls were built only to a height just above the ceiling tiles. Therefore, teachers do not have soundproof rooms. If activities become louder in one room, it has an impact on the students in the room next to it. In addition, there are no electrical outlets on the walls that were added, so we have half as many outlets as we should have. Staff often need to utilize power strips in the classrooms, which is a safety concern in a building as old as ours. When we take a look at lighting, staff have found that covering our fluorescent lights with cloths, with cloth helps our students with sensory needs cope with the more subdued lighting to reduce the glare of the lights and help with learning. Since the school is fifty years old, we, our walls have been painted numerous times. When we have painted recently, the paint peels, no matter what we do. This occurs in hallways as well as classrooms. The wallpaper is wrinkled, cut, and patched in many places throughout the building. The tiles on our floors are starting to fall apart. Last year, I don't know how many times, I had kindergarten and first grade students bring me pieces of tile so that I could glue them back down. We have water leaks throughout the building, we're constantly replacing seal tiles, ceiling tiles to make our building look nice. Then, after the next rain, they need replacing again. We have barrels and buckets in the hallways each time it rains. Our interior doors are in need of replacement, many don't close appropriately, they are in pretty rough shape since they have been used for fifty years. Our casework, in addition, our casework is old and outdated. You can go to the next slide. We have some bathrooms at Viking that are not ADA compliant, as this one indicates. Some of the stalls are rusting, that on the bottom picture is rust in the bathroom, not what you think it could be. In our two-three wing, our bathroom doesn't handle the capacity of the students we have using it. 4K uses the bathroom at least twice in the morning and twice in the afternoon, and then second and third graders also use the bathroom many times throughout the day. The boys' bathroom, bathrooms flood every year. When it happened this year in the four-five wing, they found fifty years of sediment that clogged the pipes. We're wondering if that could be the issue in the two-three wing. Our elevator is original to the building. The last time we had someone come to repair it, he said he didn't know if it could be repaired much longer. When you have a two-story building, the elevator is vital for students with disabilities, people with medical concerns, or getting cleaning equipment from one level to the next. We don't have lockers, as you can see from the picture. Instead, we have hooks with shelves above them and blue buckets for hats or mittens. Students do not have privacy. Items get mixed up and lost frequently. If and when there's a head lice concern, where a jacket is hanging could lead to further spread. What we have now does not make our school look good. Our ductwork, we really need to take a look at our HVAC system. Staff and students are unhappy with our temperature control in the building due to something not working properly with our heating and cooling system. We can go into one room and it's very cold, and at the same time, another room in the building has fans running because it's so hot. Every summer, we have a couple of rooms that get mold on the carpet due to the amount of humidity in the air. We have classrooms that have also gotten mold on the walls. There's, there's also a room currently used by our reading-together facilitator that has had a musty or soil odor. The facility services and custodial team has attempted to help us remove the smell by painting the room, replacing the carpet, and calling in a specialist. However, the odor remains and has been an ongoing issue for years. Our fire pole stations are original to the building and need to be replaced after fifty years. Some rooms have difficulty hearing the fire alarm and announcements that are made over the PA system. Although we have tried several times to remedy the situation, it's still an issue from time to time. Going to the outside of the building, we have a play structure that is wooden. They don't make wooden play structures any longer. It has some wood missing and is very outdated. Kids love to play on it, but it's not going to last a lot longer. Some of our outside doors have been replaced, which is wonderful, but we still have some that are rusted at the bottom, and rodents can and have gotten into the building. And finally, this is our picture of our building envelope. You can see that it has gaps and openings in it. This is where water can get in and go into the building. There's obviously more to Viking than the building. The people truly make it a special place to be. We have a building with character, we know that. There's some great, great things about Viking. It's big, it's in a beautiful location, the K-one rooms and the gyms are spacious and developmentally appropriate for student learning. But we're looking forward to some updates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Actually, I have a question. So both in this building and in the middle school, I've seen a lot of peeling paint or chipping tiles and stuff. Do we have concerns with lead paint or asbestos in these buildings with our children?
Chad, Chad, can you come over?
Run over, Chad.
And can you put up the document that shows the totals for, as he's coming over?
That's up to me.
Mike, here's good?
Yeah.
You can talk about that.
So as far as the asbestos goes, what we've been doing, what we've been doing in the past, starting with John Daly, is if we have new construction, that's our main concern, we'll have everything abated to, or we'll, we'll put samples in for testing. For example, over at Viking, we put some new flooring in on the first floor.
This summer, this last summer?
This summer.
Yeah.
And then we had that tested, and it came up for asbestos for the glue. So a twenty-three thousand dollar project ended up being like fifty-six thousand dollars because you have to call a team and then, and then they have to do the, all the abatement. So to answer your question, not if we don't move the item, not if we don't move that, that kind of material. If we're taking the tile out, if we're taking the ceiling down, taking some insulation off, then we really have to look into it. If it's in place, we're safe, but when we start doing the, sorry, when we start taking things apart, when we start trying to do small repairs, we always have to look at that. So that's for every project we do.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
How about the lead in the paint? Is, is that older paint?
We would look into, that would be another concern also. So everything that we would have to cut apart, if, if we got to drill into it, if we got to do any kind of repair, any type of project construction, we'll have to have that tested.
And if there's just chipping paint that's visible, then you, we don't...
I'm sure they painted over things, like in the years. Go ahead, Bonnie.
When we first started this, paint classrooms, we, our custodians scraped the paint and repainted, and then it peeled off again the next year, and we found that originally, the wrong paint was put on the walls, and the only way to correct it is to re-rock the walls. So we had a couple classrooms done, but there are more like that. Yeah.
Thank you.
We're good?
Might as well just stay there, Chad.
Sure.
Rachel, Faber with Evergreen.
Hello, thank you for sitting through some not super fun topics tonight. I just have to tell a quick story, as my colleagues shared, and I got to listen for the second time tonight already, just to share a little bit about how hard our departments and teams and people work. When Evergreen had the two-stage entry put on in two thousand nineteen, we all of the sudden had this high-pitched, have you ever heard your children learn to play the recorder? That was in our office all day, any time of day, ear-piercing screech. And the number of times that maintenance people, custodians, different companies we work with were in the office trying to fix this for us were countless. They fixed it, it just moved across the hall to where the offices used to be, where we have children with autism who perked up right away every time the screeching began. Again, we had people endlessly at Evergreen working on it for us, and so the amount of time and attention people spend to make our buildings what they are just deserves recognition. So I wanted to start with that. And the screeching is gone, however, it's, it's always somewhere because it's a systemic issue. It's new construction meshed with the old construction and maybe something with the piping that I don't understand. I didn't go to school for that. Chad can explain. So with Evergreen, you can see in front of you, like Dr. Mueller mentioned and others, the yellowed areas are what Chad is hoping to budget for out of buildings and grounds, and green... and green is the high the rest of the high priority. Right away, you my eye is drawn to interior finishes, nutrition services, building envelope. And I will tell you that, yes, we need new doors. Yep, our casework is ugly. We don't have lockers. The cubbies we have from the new construction are way too small because what we knew going into it was we don't have the space in the hallway for anything larger. So rather than spend time talking about these things, I I want to go back and just say, we can deal with ugly, not pleasing to the eye. I can even deal with busted casework at this point. What is screaming to me at Evergreen and our staff and our families is safety. So first and foremost, many of you know, we're raising money for lower playground equipment. That's not on the on and underfunded needs list. It's never been something that was district funded. So I don't list it on on and underfunded needs, knowing it's not district funded. It's always been building for as long as I've been here. In two thousand seventeen, Evergreen raised money and put in a new piece of equipment on the upper playground. It's also not deferred maintenance. Again, it's never been part of our budget, so it's under educational adequacy. However, I can't sit up here and say that the orange broken cabinets need to go when we have playground equipment that is not usable due to safety concerns.
Is it okay if I say something real quick?
Yeah.
Just real quick, this is the perfect slide for it. So when you see my stuff in yellow, just know for like the top line item, I'm not going to try to get one million dollars in my budget for that. But what that does show is that there are some things that are not zero to five years in that category, that are more like zero to six months, zero to one year. So I'm going to have to do those items, but it falls into that category, if that makes sense. Thank you for the time.
So in this first picture, you can see some of that really pretty orange. Our elevator that I think is from nineteen seventy-eight is like the original model of it. Some lighting that has covering. We have shared spaces, some mechanical pieces. Second slide, you see more of that playground that I'm talking about in our outdoor spaces. So some of these pictures represent the platforms our students climb on to go down the slide. It's been caution taped off because those are actually really sharp. And five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds are not always upright on their two feet. They're crawling, they're laying, they're sprawling. And so that is why that section of playground is unusable and unfortunately irreplaceable at this point. So you can't just remove part of it and call it all good and up to specs. You need to replace the entire unit. Top right, you see where we, again, our amazing maintenance department, put in a board, AKA ramp, so that wheelchairs, ball carts, et cetera, can get in and out of door B once door B was replaced and the cement settled there. On the top left, you see our upper playground blacktop, AKA shipping and receiving, AKA dumpster area. So just another safety concern that we have students playing and we have shipping and receiving occurring every day out there on our playground. The other major safety concern, you can see, yes, we need some roofing and some nutrition services, refrigerators, and some storage shed roofing. But again, safety, our loop, our drop-off or more so pickup is unsafe, if I'm going to be blunt. The loop is just too small for the size of our school. So not I don't know that you can see it in this picture, however, daily at three-thirty, you can see cars in the pickup line blocking traffic on Long Cooley. What's further concerning about this is heading toward the middle school on Long Cooley, right after that entrance and exit into our loop is our crosswalk. The number of times staff have come and reported to me, working that crosswalk, they feel like they almost got ran over, is a concern. Up then to the left, if you're looking out from our building, cars are parked all along Long Cooley, up and down McHugh Street to the right. And then you also see families and students crossing our parking lot and standing in our handicap accessible parking stalls because they're parked all over the front and side of the building. It's just a super unsafe situation every day after school. So that's Evergreen in a nutshell.
Any questions? Thank you, Rachel. And I remember the lockers. Lucy wrote a letter when she was there, she thought they should have lockers there. They still don't.
Good evening. For those who don't know, I am Nick Weber, the principal at Prairie View. And we serve approximately four hundred and eighty students. And Prairie View was built in two thousand nine. Ms. Morgan and my presentation is going to be much, much shorter, as most of you would would probably assume. So I'll speak to Prairie View. Our staff, our students are very fortunate. We're thankful for the community, our district leadership. I can honestly say it's a vibrant school for learning, mostly due to the people who work within the building. But the reality is that it's a it's an exceptional building conducive to learning, lots of natural light, space. So our students and staff are really, really fortunate. And so I want to make sure that that's clear, that we are very thankful to have the place place we do. When I bring up, I'm going to bring up really three things, three items, and one of them is a playground. But please know that it is not comparable to the needs in a couple of other buildings. And I think everybody that works at Prairie View would admit that and know that there's other priorities in the district. But what I would like to say about a playground is that I'd like to see an all-accessible playground where students of all abilities can enjoy the equipment, can enjoy the space without without too much stress or extra support. I think that's very important in all of our buildings. Another item is LED lighting. We'd like to see in the building, across the building. And then also, as we've grown at Prairie View, which is a great problem to have, we are truly out of storage. So we could definitely use some attention to storage for educational equipment and supplies. And that's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? Great, thank you.
All right, and I will end it here.
So I am Natalie Morgan, the principal at Sand Lake. I'm just going to echo what Nick Weber said, that we are very blessed at Sand Lake with the natural light and the newer building that we have, it was built in nineteen ninety-nine. I do want to thank the other administrators for going. I know sometimes it's hard to get up here and share some of the the opportunities for improvement that we have throughout the district. I will also say like Nick, that in all abilities, playground would be beneficial to all learners at Sand Lake. Right now, we do have a student who uses a wheelchair to get around and we had to put a carpet down for him to access the one swing that is available. And the other thing is the HVAC HVAC system. We are being a little bit reactive right now where we wait for a problem and then we fix it, especially some of our actuators that have gone down this year. So just having it commissioned to make sure that we are being more proactive, which in the long run would save money. But again, those are the things at Sand Lake and overall, it's a great place to be. Any any questions for me?
Questions? Thank you. I did have a general question for Dr. Mueller, so thank you. Which of our schools have the sinking funds that were a part of their?
So I do know, and Julie might have to help me with this, but Prairie View has a sinking fund. I know that. And Sand Lake also has a sinking fund.
High school addition.
High school addition. So our the ones that are three newest facilities do have that, which does help with our maintenance and upkeep and.
Maybe explain for the community what that is.
Yes, I'll do my best. So with when the construction of the building occurred in that, there was dollars put aside within those referendum dollars to keep the app the maintenance in a fund so that you can keep the facility, use those dollars to keep like the roof repairs going or keep the so basically keep the condition of the building in good shape. At the high school, for example, also, not only is there the sinking fund for the maintenance, but we also did at that time do the operational part of the referendum so that we could staff our custodial maintenance so we can keep the building in good shape also. So that was part of that.
And those are funds that we can allocate annually to go into those funds so that it's not just a one-time.
So it's taken off the top of the levy and allocated into those sinking fund fund balances? And just to piggyback, if everyone can hear me, there's also.
Maybe you should come up here and talk.
Sure.
Please. Thank you. Don't I have an amazing team to help me out?
True, yes.
Thank you very much.
So those operational referendums that have sinking funds attached to their construction projects are basically annually levied for, and so we pull it off the top of that levy revenue through the tax property taxes and set it aside. And then based on when those projects come available, like a new roof or a new boiler, a good example recently is the Sand Lake boiler needed replacement to the tuna of three hundred thousand. So we depleted quite a bit of the Sand Lake sinking fund that's been saved since nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, when that referendum passed and was put on the levy originally. So we save it and then designate either through maintenance or what I was going to say too is Prairie View has both a maintenance sinking fund for roof and and HVAC replacement, but also they have a technology sinking fund. So they have two different components to that operational referendum that was passed when the Prairie View school was built. And then for the high school, seventy thousand square feet addition, we do we did also have two questions on the ballot that year and then one was to bond for the construction and remodel and then a recurring referendum to both support, like Dr. Mueller said, additional custodial and maintenance staff for the addition and then a portion of that is set aside in sinking fund for the same purposes in the future down the road, a portion of a roof or or rooftop unit or something like that when end of age is reached.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Which yeah, great question, which kind of wraps up. So what we're in the process of doing is just prioritizing these needs that you heard about this evening in our Buildings and Grounds Committee, but then identifying identifying fundies funding sources. So for example, like as we Julie and you shared, we do have sinking funds that are available, but then we also have our capital maintenance budget. We have currently some S R dollars that possibly could be used towards some of these improvements and so on. So really looking at what are ways we can build a lot of this with into our current current budget and then what pieces can we not? And then looking at bringing a recommendation to the board beginning of May, just to start conversation as to what should we start? The board has been very good at investing in our facilities and making sure our staff and students have great learning environments and we just want to continue that that tradition as we have multiple aging, naturally progressing aging buildings right now. That's just where we're at. So, thank you.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Mueller? Otherwise, thank you so very much for the presentation this evening. Then we will move on to eight point four, which is the Hall of Excellence. Mr. Sackett and Englerth.
My name is Mark Englerth, the Activities Director for the high school, and we have the pleasure of ending with a little bit more of a positive presentation for you. So and not so much of the challenges that we have to work through. What we'd like to talk about today is to discuss the concept of the Holman High School Hall of Excellence. And the purpose of this is to recognize and celebrate students, staff, teams, and community members in an equitable manner. And we're trying to recognize the accomplishments of our individuals and teams to try to build and strengthen the positive culture we already have at the high school. And we feel this moves us towards the realization of our vision of belong, serve, succeed in the areas of academics, athletics, and activities.
I'm helping mark out tonight. So the location of this Hall of Excellence would be displayed in in our current display case in the main entrance in the high school. And so we want this to be an inclusive setting, so we're going to go to more of a digital type screen, but we'll show you some pictures first here of the location. This trophy case would be remodeled, not completely removed, to serve a digital touch display to to cover all the areas that we're going to talk about here tonight. So the digital presentation will be touchscreen and cover multiple areas within our building. So academics, and we'll touch on that specifically, but addressing our student academics and our staff achievements academically. Our athletics, so coaches and athletes. Our activities, so both our students in in our activities as well as our advisors. And then our community members that have been recognized through various things such as the Alumni Award. The benefit to this, or there are many, but one of the benefits to this is having a centralized location for everybody to engage in with this interactive display panel to learn about all the great things that are going on in in the Holman School District and in particular Holman High School. And so we have limited wall space. One of the great traditions about Holman, I think the picture's next here, Mark, is we put up all the graduating classes in our building, which is an awesome tradition that we want to continue, but wall space is not unlimited. So a digital panel to recognize our our staff and students and athletes and community members would be a more optimal way to to go. Here would be an example of one of the things that we're looking at from an academic. So you would be looking at the the screen and an example would be recognizing our valedictorian or salutatorian of each class. Some other things that we're looking at is recognizing our high honor roll students, which anybody could could potentially achieve from an equitable standpoint. And then looking at some things from our staff members to be recognized, whether it's is that the next slide, Mark, or is that up a little bit later? Whoops, I think you went, oh, maybe it's not in this one. Our Teacher of the Year, or we've had Cole Fellowship honorees, both at the regional level and the state level. As you might remember, Roger King was recognized as Cole Fellowship Teacher of the Year. And this would be a place to recognize and honor those accomplishments of our staff academically.
And beyond the academic level, we would also look at activities and athletics combined. For example, National Honor Society could be recognized in this Hall of Excellence as well. Different types of exceptional artwork.
This one, our Teacher of the Year.
Oh, a little feedback.
Yep. Exceptional artwork could be recognized very easily within this format. Athletics, if we have an outstanding athlete, I think of comes to mind Jaren Kendall, would be somebody that would fit perfectly in the Hall of Excellence. And then when there's somebody in the community that does something exceptional for the school district or the high school, that would be a place where they could be recognized as well, which also ties in with what we're doing with the Holman Viking Alumni Award. We've been doing this award for many years and it's nice that we've got a beautiful location in our new commons area, but the print sometime is very difficult to read, especially if you're on the upper level. What we'd be able to do is put these on the digital display as well and then people could actually read those very comfortably looking at the digital screen. So it ties very nicely with something that we've had as a long tradition at Holman High
Another added benefit to the Hall of Excellence, it would tie in nicely with some of the academic theme that we're continually work on at the high school level. So currently, our some of our students are working on some signage and been meeting with our departments to develop a very unique sign that would represent their department. Language Arts, World Language, Career and Tech Ad, World, did I say World Language already? PE. So we have some students actually building these very unique signs, which is a really awesome project. And so all of our core academic areas will be represented in the signage of our commons and this would also tie into that very well as well.
So up at the top of the commons, you would see those signs in the picture. So management of this display board, well, the company that we would work through would be in charge of originally doing. be in charge of originally doing the programming and the setup and implementing a large amount of data into the system, but then, our current staff would continue the long-term management of the system. We believe that the expenses for this project is going to run somewhere between $30,000 and $40,000. That would be the purchase of the digital display, the programming that would need to go into it, and the organizing by the company, as well as the architectural design and the reconstruction of the trophy cases that Mr. Sackett showed you earlier. Fortunately, our Booster Club has agreed to take on a majority of this project, so we expect the majority of the funding to come through them. But also, the co-curricular current budget would help pick up some of the cost, and the building budgets that Mr. Sackett works with would also help a little bit with the cost of this project. So, gave you a lot to think about there. How about questions?
Are there any questions?
It's a great idea.
Does all the trophies and awards, the stuff that are the trophy case now are going to be just stored somewhere?
The idea is that we're going to reorganize. What we'd like to do is display more of our state trophies in that area, so we highlight some of our outstanding achievements, maybe first, second, third. And as we get more first place, we would continue to build that area as a highlight of state champions in that areas, is the idea. So, there would still be trophies in that area, just not as many of, let's say, the less important trophies, I guess. I don't, maybe that's not the right way to say that. More of the state championship trophy level type.
And how about the, I noticed with the new construction, that we've kind of lost the regional and sectional plaques?
Actually, the sectional plaques have been put up down in one of the athletic hallways outside of the wrestling area. The regional plaques, the coaches felt that they would like to just recognize sectional ones, so that was an option to put those up, but they felt they wanted to lift the bar for our athletes, and just wanted to put sectional ones there.
That's awesome. And I've been in schools, seen some of the signs those guys are making for the signage, and it's, they're pretty darn professional. I'll tell you, you won't see nicer signs than that anywhere in the city, I'm sure. They're really nice. You're doing a nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah, our students have done a good job kind of learning our programming, utilizing our new machines to make some of our new signage.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, I'm assuming the $30,000 to $40,000 is the cost to get everything up and running? Are you anticipating, like, a maintenance cost to this over time as well?
No, once it gets up and running, there shouldn't be any additional costs. It's more time of individuals working on it and inputting the data from there.
So, my guess is that while we would hope there wouldn't be any maintenance costs, there's probably going to be some upkeep, because things change, technology changes, all of that kind of thing. So, but my concern would be along, how do you identify who is going to go up there on the wall, or in that display? Because we saw with the memorial wall, for example, a lot of discussion, and I think one of the things we found was we didn't have anything about it in writing. And so, I would hope that you'll come back to us, like the alumni award, the annual alumni award. I know they worked many months on identifying the criteria for recognition and who would, and once that was done, it was like a lot of work upfront, but as a board, once that was done and approved and implemented, we haven't really heard a word about it, because it was, you know, all of that stuff was thought out. So, that would be just something to, you know, even what activities are going up there. Is it open to any activities? I just think down the road, that would serve you well to have all of that planned out and documented. So.
I guess I would see for the main areas, there would be a committee behind that, very much like the Holman Viking Alumni Award. And in that committee, there would be different roles for people to get jobs done, and there would be, part of that would be developing criteria within each area, because he-
That would be awesome. And that's what I'm saying, is before you start doing that, making sure, and I think that alumni committee was made up of staff and students and community members, parents and other community members. So I think having, which is kind of our practice, making sure you have a committee that includes stakeholders would be important to bring out, too. So, but thank you. I think this is awesome. I think, especially the inclusion of the academic side of things, I think that is just very progressive. And so, thank you so much for doing that and bringing that forward. So then, if there aren't any other questions related to that, I would move on to the consent agenda items. We have three items this evening that were presented. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, unless you have other, any item you'd like to have pulled separately.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Dr. Mueller, did you have?
Yep, I just wanted to get it up there so people could see it. We're good.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And then, moving on to board member reports and discussion, I'll call on the board members in order of roll call and ask you to present any comments or committee reports that you have. Mr. Dunlap?
First of all, I'd like to thank Steve Doyle for stopping by and talking to us. It's always interesting to hear from him. And then, congratulate some of the winter sports teams. The girls' hockey team came home with a silver ball. The boys' wrestling team came home with a second-place silver ball. And the girls' wrestling team, they had an outstanding season this winter. Jim Naxis came home with a fifth place in Division One. So I think the spring sports have got a pretty high bar to live up to in the spring. If you get a chance, go see the play it's putting on at the high school right now, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown. It's a musical. I guess it's a pretty good show. It'd be worth going and getting entertained for an evening. And also, this weekend, go catch the Gathering of the Stars 2022, a show choir event. They'll have some of the best show choirs in the state there, so it'll be worth going to see that. I did notice we have a lot of repairs and upgrades identified by the classrooms and the buildings in the school district. I think we got a, we have a very good start on what needs to be done and where we have to go. It's just a matter of now of getting a good plan, what we need to do to get it done and move forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jagzinski?
My last name. Still stuttering.
I know, after 20-some years.
I just, we don't have any personnel and governance meeting coming up till April, so I have no report on that. I guess I just wanted to remind everyone of the upcoming candidate forum on March 21st, sponsored by the League of Women Voters, and it's virtual. The link is on the school district website. And the league has been sponsoring the school district candidate forum for at least 20 years. I mean, since I, before I got on even. So, all the candidates are asked the same questions, given the same amount of time, and it will let you get all your questions answered. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Lau?
I just want to thank Representative Doyle for coming out tonight, and then, to the building leaders for coming out and, for lack of a better word, airing some of the dirty laundry that we have. That can't be, that can't be easy for them, for a building that they have so much pride in and the staff that they work with, to talk to the public and us about some of the problems. It can't be hard, but we appreciate it. We need to know that stuff, so we can make improvements.
Ms. Reber?
Yes, Building and Grounds went, met tonight, and we did listen to all the administrators' presentations. I guess I have to say that I'm most impressed what the principals had to say, and how they work together, supporting each other's schools, not just, you know, saying my school needs all of this. I was very impressed by all the principals and supporting each other in the entire district. So, good job, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Wopat?
We have a student achievement and learning committee meeting coming up next Monday.
Right. Thank you. Is that, that's Emily Zach?
Right now, we have six cases in the district of positive COVID cases, which I think is really good, considering we're not wearing masks. And then, also bringing up the candidate forum next week, there's actually been a lot of people in elections lately who have not participated in bias forums by the hosts. I know the League of Women Voters can say that they're nonpartisan, but it's, sometimes there's a difference between what you say and what you really mean. There's also, I just want to quote some of these statements of beliefs by two candidates that are running, of supporting the educators. "Retention of quality teachers and staff is paramount to a strong community. Teachers and staff should be supported and competitively compensated in relation to surrounding districts. In an increasing, more competitive workforce, it is vital that our teachers and staff are compensated at an appropriate level. Failure to do so will lead to high-quality people leaving the district in search of employment at other neighboring districts or outside industries. Our community is leading in development and growth. Great teachers are one of the best assets we can offer our community." And that is 100% true, because I can name a list of great teachers who have left to Onalaska, right 10 minutes away. And I've just seen people get mad about that statement for some reason, and sure, maybe their kid didn't want to wear a mask to school. That's the kid's choice. The parent cannot walk their kid, take their hand, and bring them to school and say, "You have to wear this mask, son or daughter." That is the kid's choice. It's the kid's choice. Then, teachers pay, and masks have nothing to do with each other, so I don't know why we're still so strung up on masks still, even though they're not required anymore. But we just need, like, this election has became so negative, and it's just sad to go on Facebook and read these comments by so many people, and this should really be, like, I feel like we're scaring people away by how negative we've been towards each other. I mean, I just would never want to run in a position where I'm easily attacked for saying that we don't want good, quality teachers to leave a district. I mean, it's kind of my rant for tonight, but that's all I have to say.
Hey, Jennifer Deek?
Yeah, I want to thank Representative Steve Doyle for speaking to the board tonight. We really appreciate having him here, and also want to thank the building administrators for coming out and giving their presentation. I always think things like that are, when you get it firsthand, it's eye-opening and valuable for making decisions.
Okay, thank you. I just want to address a couple of the comments that were made, and I know that this school board has been working since the summer to address some of the issues that have been raised, and we are getting closer to coming to a conclusion to address some of the concerns and issues that have been raised related to workforce, not just teachers, but all members of our workforce. And I would say that we, tonight, for example, have another closed session, but have had four, at least four workshops, where we have been working on addressing that, and also, did something pretty unprecedented in giving a mid-year increase to our staff in recognition of all of the extra work that they have been doing. So, while I might take a different perspective on what, how this board values their workforce, I certainly understand and recognize why people might bring that out, but I just want to set the facts, that we have been working on this, and we have been addressing it, and we did take some action in January, and continue to work towards action. Respecting educators goes beyond their payroll. Respecting educators means respecting the work that they do in developing and bringing to us the curriculum that is delivered in this school district. It is the teachers who are on the front lines of developing and bringing that curriculum to us. So when it's suggested that we have divisive curriculum in this district, it is saying our teachers have brought that curriculum to the district, which is not true. There are many, many other issues that I could bring up, but I don't want to make this political. We have worked very hard not to do that in our comments. I would note that we have a crew of custodians and maintenance workers that work very, very, very hard. And I can't tell you how many times people approach me and say, "Your school buildings look really nice," when I have been into them. And whether it is for a basketball tournament, a youth basketball tournament, or they've come for a forensics competition, or any number, the play, any number of things, we constantly are being complimented for the work that you and your staff do. So we want you to know how much we appreciate that. As Dr. Mueller said, we have aging buildings, and if you look at a house that's 50 years old, you would see some of the same kind of things happening, only on a smaller scale. On a, you know, a 30,000-square-foot building, or 60, or whatever the size of our buildings are, you're going to see it multiplied. And it's to be expected. And so, I think, as someone said, they need to be acknowledged for the positive work that they've done over the years and continue to do, and how much we appreciate that. And while the building administrators shared with us some of the challenges and opportunities we have for improvement tonight, I know that was hard for them, but it's important that we know as a district, and the community knows, the situations that we're facing in our buildings. And so, I do appreciate Dr. Mueller for you sharing that with us tonight and having them come forward and doing that. So, that is all that comments I have for this evening. I would note that our board meeting schedule is, we do have the candidate forum on the 21st. The 24th is our upcoming board meeting. The April 5th is spring election. April 11th is a board meeting, and April 25th is the organizational meeting. Anita, would you read the motion for closed session?
Yep. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in this case, base wage negotiations, and the district administrator's evaluation."
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Anita, if you would do the roll call vote, please?
Gary Dunlap?
Yes.
Cheryl Hancock?
Yes.
Kyma Yes, Chris Lau?
Yes.
Rebecca Reber?
Yep.
Brian Wopat?
Yes.
Okay, we, motion passes. We will be in closed session as soon as the room closes.
I don't know why I didn't want to come for a lower weight.